I call the September 19th, 2017 Lake Mills City Council Meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion from the council to remove item 8C from the agenda.
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's the presentation on the 2018 Employee Health Insurance Option. We are not at a point where we want to discuss that tonight, so is that correct? Okay.
Take the roll.
Yes, any discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll? Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Okay, thank you. Taking us to item three, Corrections and/or Approval of the City Council Minutes of September 5th. Mrs. Fritsch?
Whoops, roll call.
Oops. Oh, roll call. I put my little thing at the wrong place. No, I did it wrong, didn't I, Steve? Okay. I put it at the right place, but skipped it. Roll call, please. Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
And here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
And here, I thought Dan was just telling me I needed a roll call vote.
I think that would have counted anyway. I'm not positive about that. I don't know.
Sorry.
We're all right.
Okay, well, thanks for your attempt. All right, now it takes us to item three, Correction and Approval of the City Council Minutes of September 5th, 2017. Okay, is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'll move the minutes of September 5th, council.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Steve Fields will second. And any other discussion on that item? Seeing none, now we'll do a roll call. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Good. Okay, item four, Correspondence. Anyone on the council like to share correspondence that you've had? No, quiet on your end?
Yep, nothing.
I did have some correspondence, but it was all of a personal nature, items that I looked into and took care of, nothing that needs to be taking council action. So I guess we can move on to item number five. Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. And since we have a small number of people in our audience tonight, did you wish to speak to us? No? Okay. Then we will close public comment due to the lack of public comment. Okay. And taking us to City Manager's Report. Mr. Wilkie.
I received a thank you letter from the Kissimmee Utility Authority, and it reads, "On behalf of the Kissimmee Utility Authority Board, employees and our 74,000 customers, please accept our sincere gratitude and heartfelt thanks for your help in restoring power to our community following Hurricane Irma. Irma left more than 38,000 of our customers without power, but thanks to your community we were able to quickly restore power to many of our homes and businesses within our service area. We are grateful for the dedication of every employee who took time away from their families and traveled many miles to help restore power to our community. We truly appreciate your service and support. Once again, thank you for helping get our power on." Kissimmee Utility Authority.
Now, where is that located?
Florida.
Pardon me?
Florida.
Oh, in just, it's a community in?
Right, it's a public power utility in Florida.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're a part of a large group that, you know, if they put out a call, we respond.
How many employees did we have that went?
Two.
Okay, well, thanks to those employees as well for giving of their personal time as well as their work time. Okay.
I still have a few more.
Oh, good.
The City of Lake Mills Band is requesting that you, that your proposed budget for the coming year include a recommendation of $1,100 to fund the band director's position. It goes on to say more, but basically it's a request for funds in the budget.
And?
Have we ever done that?
We've always done it.
We've, yeah, it's been, is it, is it?
That just seemed weird then.
Is it in the budget as we have it now?
There's money in there, I'm not sure, it's, I think it is 1,100.
Okay, we'll double check that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Sandy Beach Market Study, you guys all got that? It was a draft. We've accumulated some more documents. It will probably start to be ready to come out.
I don't remember seeing it.
Oh, no, we haven't gotten it.
Okay, it'll probably be ready to, for council review, December.
Okay, that's good because can we do it after budget?
Yeah, yeah, it's not gonna.
Yes.
Doesn't need to impact this budget, so.
Yeah, one thing at a time.
Brewster Drive is about 99% done, there are a couple retaining laws, and then that project will be done.
Including landscape?
Yes, landscaping is the last thing left. There's a couple retaining laws and some landscaping, but that should be done shortly.
Were there any problems with it? With the rebuilding?
Uh, no, not significant, you know.
You did have some.
Some grade, some grade issues, some tree issues, those types of things.
Didn't find any quicksand or anything?
Uh-uh. They're fine. Eastlake Park Place. We have nailed down 90% of an agreement. We just have to kick the trigger on what date. So that may be coming. That, that could be an issue. Street maintenance work, I think you've noticed that there's a lot of street maintenance work going on, a lot of oil and chipping right now. There will be some additional milling and overlaying and some scarfing and wedging that will be going on yet this year. We got a notice that about noon on Friday that they would be coming in to do oil, no, noon on Thursday that they would be coming in to do oil and chip. So by four o'clock, we had used the AlertSense for the first time. Did anyone get noticed?
I got both a text and an email.
I got a phone call, a text, and an email.
Well, it's because you're special.
A lot of people got it, and some of them were mad that it was kind of late, but.
It didn't say when it was going to happen, but it did alert me that it's going to happen. And man, yesterday afternoon it happened.
The, what it said was, is you get 150 characters, and so I had to try and fit it in there. So what I said is the City of Lake Mills is oil and chipping, there's information on the website, please go over the website. And then there was a big long letter and a whole bunch of additional information there on the website. There's also now a place on the website where you can sign up for AlertSense. So some people didn't get the message, and so if you, you know, if you want to get all those types of notices, you know, emergency notices from the police department on, like Amber Alerts and weather alerts and all that type of stuff comes out on that, so it's good to sign up for it.
Okay.
And there's a place on the website where you can.
Does the website tell us what streets were included in that?
Yes, the website did have a map that pointed out what streets were. And we didn't do a citywide broadcast for AlertSense, we only did it based on within 150 feet of the street.
Oh, that's why I didn't think of that.
So not everybody in the city got noticed. I think there were like 529 people who got noticed. But some of them were people who used to live on that street that moved out, and some of them who live there now, so it, it needs a little bit of maintenance, people need to take care of getting themselves on, and we need to clear out who's off. The dam, the dam is very close to finished, but we're having a little problem pushing it over the edge, so a dam's taken some action today that we hope to take care of that. I don't want to see that for another year.
Pushing it, the water going over the edge?
No.
[laughing].
I mean, pushing the contractor over the edge of the dam.
[laughing].
We're pretty close to that.
Let's be careful about that action.
Punch list items.
[laughing].
Yeah, punch list item, there's one punch list item, can you believe it? One, and we can't get it done.
I'm sorry, I was laughing, what was that last statement?
There's one punch list item that's outstanding, we can't get it done.
Oh.
Because the contractor just can't fit it in, or doesn't want to.
Doesn't know how to do it.
So Dan is going to work on that?
Yes, Dan has already worked on that.
All right, thank you, Dan. All right, so we'll have to have a dam party when we're done.
I'm sure she will.
Oh, jeez.
Can't help it.
That's pretty good. I wish I had that one. By the Plus is a business on the south end, and we're upgrading the electrical service to them, provide some benefits to them, provide some benefits to the people over in the industrial park, so it reduces the number of drops that we have in the industrial park. We significantly reduced the number of drops that we have from when it got here. By drops, I mean small outages, you know, like 30 seconds, but that, all that technical equipment over there.
Oh, yeah.
That drops for a second and they have to start all over. Some of those businesses, when that piece of equipment stops, they lose 20, $30,000 worth of material. So it's important, so this connection here helps stabilize our system, and so we've acquired some easements and taken some actions, and we'll do some rebuilding along with what's going on at South Main Street. I get a lot of questions, probably as you do, about the Megan Development, which is the 144 apartments on the east side. They have started work, they have run into a few problems, which they did an early start based on the fact that they thought they could have everything ready, and they don't. So they're stopped right now. I guess we'll see when they can pick up again.
Now, I've asked you this question, but just for public, these apartments are all just basic apartments, not low-income apartments.
Right, they're not low-income.
They're supposed to be luxury apartments.
That's what they were advertised there.
Yeah, but.
They still say it on the front of the document, but we've had some conversations about that, haven't we, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah, but I mean, I've had some people ask me if there were low-income apartments in that development, and the answer is no.
No.
It's just privately owned and privately done.
You would have to pass a resolution making it eligible for subsidies.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you remember when we did that once on, on some work in Brookstone.
Brookstone, right.
That never went. South Main Street is progressing, we are about to start our utilities. Frontier has apparently agreed to go underground.
Oh, very good, glad to hear that.
So I believe that charter and Frontier will be with us, and that will be going The, the barn on the south side is, I don't know if you've noticed, but that's being emptied, and they're moving out. So that'll be ready to go.
The one right at the corner here.
Way down on the curve, way down on the south end. I talked to you about the property acquisition payments, that we funded those, and Betsy has to get together the paperwork to finalize it and get it sent in, and we should be able to get that taken care of by the end of the year. The library annex, we're hoping that that, the environmental's been done, and we're hoping that'll be down next week.
Okay. Hope that goes smoothly for everybody.
We have been doing lead service lateral inspections, and we've had a lot of applications for replacement, so that's been going pretty good. Little hiccup with our employee this week, but I think we should be back on next week.
Does it, if someone has not applied for the money yet, is there still, yes, they still can, but they have to have the work done first, right?
No, you didn't get on the list.
Oh, okay. I thought at one point you had to turn in a bill.
To receive the funds back.
Right.
Okay, that's what I missed.
You want to get on the list so that you're.
Take earmark funds.
Okay.
Right, so that you have funds earmarked for you, because if you don't have the funds earmarked for you, then you're, you could be out of luck.
And if you have, if we know that you have lead pipes, you would have received a letter from the city? If the city knows about it?
No.
No.
Um.
Okay, how come?
We've done it, well, we've done it by neighborhood.
Okay.
And that's what our employee is doing, is he goes neighborhood to neighborhood and inspects when he can get into your home. So he has to schedule an appointment, and then you have to allow him, and he has to go through, and he, he provides you notice of what you have. We're doing that on a priority basis, so we did South Main Street and Mulberry, we did like Brewster and Water Street, then we were doing like Lake Street and the areas where we had done work before. And recently, we made a slight, slight shift into doing the areas that were thinking about doing oil and chip and other maintenance types of work on next year so that we can get those people in next year before we do that maintenance work, and so that we don't have a hole in the street while we're trying that.
Right, so they can oil and chip and have it look nice for more than one day.
Right.
Okay.
I'm gonna try it, the schedules, the schedules being what they are. Right now, the plumbers are so busy that they don't even really answer the phone calls right away, you may have to wait a while.
And there is on the website, the city website, there's a list of plumbers, isn't there?
Yes.
That's what I thought. And anybody listening at home, on the city website, there, if you go, you can find information about the lead pipe situation, and it'll show you exactly what you have to do, what forms have to be filled out, and so forth.
We're dealing with an expansion of a business in the industrial park, and we may have to sell them some land. We've been working on getting the CSM prepared, they have been working on another option that may not come out. Madison Street at County Highway V will be closed for a sanitary sewer project. That's just basically building a manhole.
I can't hear you real well.
We're, we're doing work on a sanitary line between a manhole and Madison Street, then running out to some lots, to the west side of Madison Street, just south of County Highway V there, by the Tyrrhenina Park.
That's why.
So you may notice a detour out there next week.
Yeah, and there was one about a week ago.
Could have been, I think that one probably wasn't a full detour, it's just a partial detour and, and, or a lane closure, and that one was probably electric related.
Oh, okay.
This one will be sanitary sewer related.
By the way, I've had several people ask, they said that the land across the street from Tyrrhenina Park has been sold. Is that, do we know anything about that? They ask if we knew, so.
We're in the same position that they are. We've heard that it's sold, but we don't know.
Okay, so we don't have official?
No, they don't go through us.
Okay. Thank you.
Rock Lake Improvement is wrapping up their Rock Lake Management Plan. Dan attended their last meeting, they kind of summarized all their objectives, and I think they'll be coming forward with their recommendations.
I believe they've scheduled a meeting for October 19th to present the proposal.
And tomorrow night, I will be meeting with town officials to go over how the municipal boundary agreement works.
When does that agreement expire?
Probably in 2022 or 2023.
And then does it roll over every year after?
I do not think so, I think it requires a regular meeting.
Yeah, that might be something to look into. I'm hoping that it has a rollover every year.
Other than that, I'm done.
Well, you've been very busy, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And that takes us to number seven, Acceptance of Minutes of the Public Works Board of August 8th, 2017, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, July 7th, 2017. Those will be placed on file. Council Business, item 8A, Miscellaneous Licenses, Tavern Operators Licenses. Would you read those names, please?
Nakia Netzer and Justina Smith.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve those two.
So move.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Okay. Item B, Discussion Decision on Bid Award Contract 2, 2017, LD Fargo, Public Library, Elevator Modernization and Cylinder Replacement. Okay, let me get my computer up with this here, too. All right, is this one yours, Steve?
The bid? Yes.
So, okay, let me get to mine. So we have a motion that we should have read, the title, and?
City Council Motion 17-9-2-1, Authorizing City Manager to Execute Agreements for Library Elevator Modernization and Cylinder Replacement.
Okay, we need a motion to approve, and then we can discuss it.
I move approval of motion 17-9-2-1.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, open for discussion. Now, Steve, do you want to tell us anything besides what we already had in our packet, or?
Um, the library elevator was inspected and determined that it needed substantial repairs. We put that out for bid. It was budgeted at 125,000, the bid came in at, the low bid came in at 111,976 dollars. There's some belief that it will be lower than that, because there were some items that, that might be adjusted, because they were put in there. The, the issue that was laying in there was is that they provided some additional contract conditions, and we've been negotiating on those since that occurred. And one of them is, is they don't believe that they can have the work done by November 30th, and I don't believe that that's any problem for us extending that date, they can, they believe they can have it done by the end of the year.
Although, the elevator's still working, though.
Yes, it still works, and so I, I really didn't have any problem with that. Our contracts normally require that, that the city be indemnified as well as the engineer. They didn't want to do the engineer, and the engineer has said that if we're okay with it, they're okay with not being indemnified, and so I was like, I don't care, you guys don't care. And the final one is liquidated damages. Because there was that completion date that they didn't think they could make, they were concerned about liquidated damages, so if we extend the completion date, the liquidated damages shouldn't be an issue. So if you guys are okay with those, then the motion that reads that the city manager can take such actions as necessary to implement said agreement, as long as you know that those are in place and feel comfortable with that motion, we can move forward, and we'll recommend that.
On the liquidated damages, are you pushing that out and setting another date at the end of the year?
Yep.
So that it still would be in place, but just with a different end date?
Day.
Okay.
Given the problems with the elevator, can we expect to go to the library and the elevator will be closed off, not working?
No, you could, I haven't seen any reason to believe that it's not working, it just, it's getting to the point where it needs maintenance, and these items were suggested and, and.
Okay, so we're being.
We put it out for bid, but I, I wrote up with it a couple weeks ago, and it was fine.
We're being proactive.
Yes.
Which is good, and I'm glad to see that.
There, well, there have been days where it hasn't worked, and there've been some people who've been stuck in there for short periods of time. Fortunately, the new system, alarm system was better than the really old one, which was is that there was a light on the outside that went on and said, "Call the police department", and the elevator stuck. The new one at least has an alarm on it, so, and the newer one will be much more sophisticated.
Do cell phones work from inside the elevator? Yes, okay, take your cellphone into the elevator at the library, just in case.
Make sure I'm AT&amp;T.
Oh, yeah, mhm, yes.
Verizon.
Well.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Bless you.
Presenting. Okay, item 8D, Resolution 1736, County Library Tax Exemption. Okay, hang on, I gotta get my. All right, would you read the title and whatever you think is appropriate?
Resolution 17-36, Resolution Requesting Exemption from County Library Tax.
Okay, this is house cleaning?
This is an annual item.
Yeah.
And what it does is, the county treasurer sends us notice about the minimum that we have to levy to fund a library to qualify for county aid, and I think we're way over that, about $200,000.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion, anybody have questions about it? I said house cleaning, I meant it, housekeeping. I think I had my mind on cleaning the house, but, oh, well, so, nothing, no discussion? Call the question. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Okay. Item 8E, Resolution 1737, Approval of Revised Title Six Plan Share Ride Taxi. Okay, I'll go back to my thing here. Okay. And would you, just read the title and we'll go from there.
Resolution 17-37, Approving the Revised Title VI, Non-Discrimination Program Limited English Proficiency Plan.
Is this also housekeeping? Is this also housekeeping?
This is required every three years, the council originally approved the plan in October of 2014. Wisconsin DOT requires it be revised every three years, so this is a revision. Um, I did the revision, I've worked with DOT, they've given a thumbs up to send it to you guys. Um, they're good with everything, and it, it really didn't change much, just some population numbers and some other small items.
Okay, so is there a motion on the council for this resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we now have a motion and a second, is there any discussion about this? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, good. And, that takes us to item nine, convene into closed session pursuant to.
Hang on, we'd like to do the, um, future agenda items, because we're not coming back out.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna change the order of the agenda. Okay, we're going to go to recommendations of future agendas? Okay, are there any recommendations for future agendas? We have quite a few future agendas set up right now.
Already.
So I'm not sure we need any more future agendas.
Well, I know on our next agenda, we'll have the budget ordinances, because I'll have to start our first reading. We'll have the first reading and, a second reading in October, and then the last reading should be the first meeting in November.
For what ordinances?
Uh, the budget ordinances.
Oh, budget, yes, okay, got it.
The general fund and the capital budgets.
Mm-hmm.
Betsy has prepared those, I think, and. Got it started.
Okay. And we have the items that were on the agenda from the last meeting, that's for quite a few meetings, um, taking us almost to the end of December, or at least into December. Do we have a, maybe the, um, the memorandum we received, is everything we need to know included in that memorandum for?
With regard to the.
Yes. Like when you want them, when we want them back?
Yes.
Okay, good, 'cause I haven't had time to look at that yet. Anybody else have another agenda recommendation? Okay, I think we're pretty busy. Now do we move into convening? Okay, now item nine, convene into closed session pursuant to, what's that little thing named?
Uh, statute, section.
Stat, section, section 1985, .85, Perrin 1 Perrin, and E Perrin. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this requires a motion, right? So, does someone want to move that we go into closed session?
I move we go into closed session.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and, we'll call.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And we will not be reconvening after our closed session. So, even though the agenda shows that on the website, uh, we will not be meeting again, so.
We'll be, we'll be reconvening to adjourn.
Yes.
Uh, but that's it, we won't be coming back into the, um, being televised, it'll just be the adjournment.
Yes, we will do that, but it'll not be televised.
Yes.
And so for all of you who are watching out there, thank you for doing that, and we will see you at our next meeting, okay?